Good evening. Welcome to the February 19th, 2018 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor Bruce Benson from Woodside Bible Church with us this evening to lead us in the invocation. If you would please stand for that, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Heavenly Father, we are pleased to be in your presence. We are assembled as a city leadership. We thank you for these men and women gifted who care for the affairs of our city. We are delighted that you have blessed, looked after each member of this assembly. We're pleased to know that they are men and women of integrity so want to be of benefit to this city. Guide and direct them this evening as they deliberate with the business at hand. We're grateful, Father, that you have marvelously, wonderfully protected our law enforcement men and women, looking after those who are protecting our homes and businesses, capable men and women looking after the protection as firefighters. Bless them. We're pleased, Father, that you are looking after our schools. We do not want what has happened in Parkland, Florida, ever, ever to occur in Troy, Michigan. We feel for the families and the loss of loved ones. We pray, Father, that you will favor these families as they grieve. May we not soon forget what has happened there. We're pleased, Father, that you have given to us a safe city. We desire your hand of protection guiding this council and the leadership of business, looking after each individual in this community. We're here not to think highly, more valuable of ourselves. We're here as servants. May this council continue to serve this city well, and to that in thy prayer in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you, Pastor. The Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Stewart.
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
All present, the first order of business, our certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have one presentation this evening. C1 is a proclamation to recognize Troy High Senior Quinn Fabre for being chosen as one of two Michigan delegates to the Senate, the U.S. Senate Youth Program, and if I could meet Quinn at the podium along with Oakland County Commissioner Doug Teets and Wade Fleming. No, 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 right here, right here. Quinn, I do a lot of proclamations and I get to read a lot of proclamations, and I have to say, I'm very honored to read this proclamation because I think it tells us what the future is about and how we have young men like you that are going to lead us in the future, and some of us old dogs here. Really, really look forward to seeing the youth that's going to lead us into the next generation. So it's my honor and privilege to present to you a proclamation. Quinn Fabre, Troy High School Senior, selected for United States Senate Youth Program, only two students chosen from Michigan, and I think that says a lot. And Quinn, I'd like to read this proclamation into the record, and I think it's just outstanding recognition to a really fine young man.
Thank you.
Whereas, the United States Senate Youth Program, better known as USSYP, announced that high school student Quinn Fabre was chosen as one of two Michigan students who will join Senator Debbie Stabenow and Senator Gary Peters in representing Michigan in the nation's capital during the 56th Annual USSYP Washington Week to be held March 3 through 10, 2018. Whereas, Quinn Fabre Senior at Troy High School was one of two Michigan students selected from among the state's top student leaders to be part of the 104 National Student Delegation, who will also each receive a $10,000 college scholarship for undergraduate study. And whereas, the USSYP was created by Senate Resolution 324 in 1962 and has been sponsored by the Senate and fully funded by the Hearst Foundation's since inception. Originally proposed by Senators Kuchel, Mansfield, Dirksen, and Humphrey, the impetus for the program is to increase young Americans' understanding of the interrelationships of the three branches of government, learn the caliber and responsibilities of federally-elected and appointed officials, and emphasize the vital importance of democratic decision-making, not only in America but for the people around the world. And whereas, each year, this extremely competitive merit-based program brings 104 of the most outstanding high school students, two from each state, the District of Columbia and the Department of Defense Education Activity, and of course, to Washington, D.C., for an extensive week-long study of the federal government and the people who lead it. And whereas, Quinn Fabre serves as the Troy High Class President, he is a Bank of America Student Leader who is very involved in public service. He has received both the Congressional and Presidential Medals for his volunteer work and represents Oakland County on the Michigan Board of Delegates. Outside of the classroom, Quinn has worked several jobs, including government relations at the Michigan Association of CPAs, finance intern on the political campaign, marketing intern at Delphi, and he will be working in Washington, D.C. for a congressman this summer. And whereas, delegates and alternates are selected by the State Departments of Education nationwide and the District of Columbia and the Department of Defense Education Activity after nominations by teachers and principals. So now therefore be it known that the Troy City Council takes this opportunity to express its sincere appreciation and recognition to Quinn Fabre. In addition to outstanding leadership abilities and a strong commitment to volunteer work, the delegates rank academically in the top 1% of the states among high school juniors and seniors. That's incredible. And be it further known that the Troy City Council, on behalf of the citizens, commends Quinn Fabre for his commitment and passion for learning and dedication as a volunteer within our community. Presented this 19th day of February 2018, Quinn, it's signed by myself, all members of City Council. Congratulations to you and thank you so much for what you've done for our community and what you're going to do for our community. Thank you, Quinn, so much.
Thank you very much.
Quinn, I know the county commissioners have something to present also, so I'm going to give the microphone to them.
Thank you.
Doug?
So Quinn, I know the mayor gave a long and lengthy explanation of all your successes and honors, and I think there are two things that need to be mentioned in addition. The first is, nobody does it on their own, but there are people that have helped you along the way. And I think two of those people, probably the most important people, are in the audience. Mom and Dad, Dave and Danielle, are here, and, you know, we can't ever say thank you enough to our parents, and so be nice to them, treat them well, right? I assure you do, but it's just a crucial part of what makes Troy a wonderful place, is we don't have a special sauce that we sprinkle on the kids when they come to the schools. It's tons and tons of parents taking time to help you with problems and homework and yada, yada. And the second thing is, you know, the saying is, too much is given, much is required, right? And we, as Troy, were honored to send you there and honored to have you take a little bit of Troy and go to D.C., but we ask that only that you give back to our community, and you have been, and thank you so much for continuing to do that, because really what makes our community a great place is the people giving back over and over again. So thank you so much for everything you've done. Be nice to your mom and dad, and Wade, do you have anything? Commissioner Fleming?
I had the opportunity to speak with mom and dad before this tonight, and I made a prediction, and I think it's a pretty safe prediction, they need to reserve a rather large wall for this young man, because I think this is just one of many recognitions, special recognitions, you're going to have throughout your lifetime and your career. But we're really proud of you. You're representing not just Troy, Troy High, but the whole state of Michigan, one of two studios from the state of Michigan. So go there, enjoy the experience. It really is a wonderful experience, I'm sure, and I know you're going to learn a lot, and bring that back to Troy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I bless you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, first of all, for sitting through this and whatnot. I am really appreciative of the Oakland County Commissioners as well as the City Council. I'm looking forward to going to Washington. It's about two weeks away now, and I can't wait to meet the other 103 delegates from across the country and bring the lessons I learned from them back to Troy. Thank you.
I wish we could just end the meeting right here. There are no carryover items this evening or public hearings. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There are no postponed items, so we will move to regular business. I1 are board and committee appointments. There are none this evening. I2 are board and committee nominations. There are no mayoral nominations this evening, so I would defer to Mayor Protem Abraham for City Council nominations.
Thank you, Mayor. I have four nominations I'd like to bring forward today. I'd like to reappoint Ann Kaminski and Max Ellert to the Liquor Advisory Board, both for terms ending January 31st, 2021, and Cynthia Wilshire and Donald Johnson, reappointments, both of them, to the Traffic Committee, both of them for terms ending January 31st, 2021.
Moved by Mayor Protem Abraham, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we nominate Ann Kaminski and Max Ellert to the Liquor Advisory Committee for the terms that expire 12/31/2021, and Donald Johnson and Cynthia Wilshire to the Traffic Committee for the terms that expire 1/31/2021. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes, thanks to those that are volunteering to be on those important committees. I3 is a request for closed session. There is a request this evening by... Should I defer this to the attorney first, or Councilwoman Hoderick?
Mayor, I can help you with it if you would like. I have been told that there's a request to waive the rules of procedure, and you can do that under 23 and add an additional item, and that item would be a request for a closed session. So the first motion would be a motion to waive the rules of procedure and allow for an additional item to be added to the agenda.
Thank you. I'll move that we waive the rules to allow for a request for closed session, I3. Support. Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we waive the rules to allow a request for closed session. Discussion on that item? The vote, Ms. Stewart.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Next is a request for closed session. I would defer to Councilwoman Hoderick.
I would like to move for a closed session as allowed by MCL 15.268. I think it says 6A?
Subsection A.
Yes, subsection A.
Support. Moved by Councilwoman Hoderick and supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve the request for closed session as stated by Councilwoman Hoderick. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to pull? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Support. Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next are memorandums and future council agenda items. There are none this evening. Public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses is next. I will call on Aaron Ladd, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on this item this evening. Good evening, Aaron.
Good evening. This came fast. That was exciting, seeing that young fellow earn what he got, so that was pretty cool. I also want to say something to Ethan. He said, "How you doing?", while I was locking my bike up outside, and I just want to say I'm doing okay. I'm keeping busy. I'm putting together a website for Detroit, I mean, pardon me, for Troy bicycling. I spoke here about three weeks ago, and it was about snow removal on the sidewalks, and what was brought up is that somebody had brought up that they thought I was crazy for riding in the wintertime. And I don't think it's that crazy. I bundle up with gloves, I put boots on, and I see that people in many cities around the world bike here around, Denver, Amsterdam, places in the Netherlands, Seattle. Detroit's picking up a huge increase in the riders in Detroit. Just the other day, I rode 38 miles with a group from the Clinton River Riders, and they too expressed that bicycling in the wintertime's not so crazy. I consider it like snowmobiling. It's fun, it's exciting, it's healthy. I hope that folks in this room visit my, or visit some of my work going on at TroyTrails.community. It's online at http://troytrails.community. It's under construction right now, it's new. So, again, I'm happy for that guy. Good luck to him, and let's make Troy great.
Thank you, Aaron. That concludes those that have signed up for comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I just see what looked like quite a few Troy High students possibly came in here. I hope they weren't here for Quinn's presentation, because we've already done that. You'll have to watch it on tape tomorrow. There are no council referrals this evening, so we will move to council comments. Any comments from council this evening? I have a comment. We just, last week, we had the retreat, and I thought it went well. It's always good to get together, to be with staff and the Planning Commission and other leaders of city administration, and I just want to shout out to the person that I think is probably responsible for putting that all together, and that's Kelly Mullenar. So Kelly, thank you so much for doing that. I know you had a lot of help, but you're the leader, so we're going to recognize you tonight, okay? All right, Kelly, thank you for what you did. It was a great time. Thanks. Any other comments from council? Councilman Hamilton?
Yes, one thing we discussed in the last meeting was to look at redoing the rules or adjusting the rules for City Council, but that included, and there's a report in the agenda, and that includes things such as allowing residents to speak a little longer or limiting our time or making sure our comments have some sort of brevity, and I just welcome people to send us suggestions for different rules. We're not making any decisions today, it appears, but we'll keep that in mind as we go along. We're open to any new rules or suggestions to help us do our jobs better.
Any comments from council? Okay, we will move to reports. Are there any comments on the reports? Councilman Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding P2C, the Big Beaver Shuttle fourth quarter update, I appreciate the continued update on the ridership levels and the progress that's being made to make that a better transportation service for our city. I did have a question, and I'm not sure if it's, I thought of it fairly recently, otherwise I would have emailed it earlier, but are we doing, are we able to talk about anything that is happening from a, I need to phrase it properly, from a, to form public-private partnerships with the hotels and restaurants to do any of the advertising on the shuttle that we talked about, since this has been talked about initially? I still think that would go a long way towards increasing visibility of the shuttles and also defraying some of the costs that the city's taking for the employees. And I know that there's a benefit to hotels and restaurants, and there's a hospitality committee meeting this Wednesday that I'll be going to that I'm sure they'll be talking good things about it, but I'm just wondering if there's been anything done. I know you've got a new marketing intern that's related to the project. Has that been looked at yet?
That's exactly what he's doing, Councilmember Baker, and he's making great headway with, if you get off at the stop at, say, Carrabba's, they give you a 10% off coupon to go into Carrabba's if you get off at that stop to go there. But that's just one of the many things that, his name is Dominic, is doing, and you may have met him at the retreat. So they're making, and Emily Frontera, making great progress, and it's actually being well-received, better than, I think, last year and better than expected. So he's a real sharp go-getter guy, and he's not really getting turned down very much.
Any other comments on the reports this evening? Councilwoman Hoderick?
Just related to the shuttle conversation, for me, our step into that has a vision connected to it. I know there's some residents that wonder, where is this going? Is this going to be viable? And I think as we step into it, understanding what we are watching in terms of what SMART is starting to do in the region. My husband and I actually took the new Fast SMART back from the airport a couple Saturdays ago, when at the last minute our son was not available to pick us up from the airport as planned, and on a whim, we decided to give it a ride. We had heard the promotions in January and did it, and it brought us back, dropped us off at Somerset Mall, and by that time, he was able to pick us up there and then bring us home. Bravely, a couple Saturdays later, with the snow, we had tickets that had been given to us to go to the DIA, and there was bad snow that Saturday, and we thought, let's try the bus instead of trying to drive, and we took it down and visited the DIA and brought it back. And this kind of connectivity for all of us is starting to happen, and I just am appreciative of staff working. of staff working and taking this step and risk. We've taken a risk to step into this for how this can work in our city and then connect. And I guess I had a firsthand seat to it and I wanted to share it publicly, that it was a very positive experience and I'm glad that Troy is connected.
Your comments and reports? Mayor Protem Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. This is in regards to P5, proposed revisions of City Council rules of procedures and in code of ethics. I'm generally supportive of what's being proposed and I thought it may be worthwhile to have some discussion on what next steps we might want to take if that's all right. I suspect there may be some tweaks when you look at the totality of the proposal. Certainly, my reading the proposed document made me think a little bit differently and caused me to reflect. So I'm hoping we can get this on a future agenda item, as a future agenda item in the near future so that we can have that discussion and dialogue.
Thank you. I think that's the intent of the report is so that we all get a chance to take a look at it and then it will be on the next agenda, I would assume. City Attorney Bloom?
Yes, Mayor. Assuming that there's consensus, of course, we appreciate whatever consensus you can give to us, but it was designed today because there were so many changes, we thought it was appropriate to give it to you as a report. And welcome any feedback that you may have and then we're happy to put it on the next agenda.
Thank you. There was a yellow sheet placed on the table this evening that has one change than what was put into the agenda packet and I believe that's highlighted in yellow on the number 15, the consent agenda, where it's highlighted to non-removed in place of other. And on the page seven, there's a yellow highlight where will is stricken and to the pre-printed agenda packet is replaced. So those are two additions that are different than were in the agenda packet. And if there are no other changes at this time, I would assume that's what's going to be presented at the next City Council meeting for discussion and/or vote. Mayor Protem Abraham?
I had sent in a suggestion over the weekend. Would that also be included in the discussion at the next meeting or?
The one item, Mayor Protem, was the addition of heading, a header for the one item.
Yes.
And again, assuming that there is no objection to that, it may be moved as well. I don't know if it makes sense to keep it here or to move it. Happy to do that. And then you had one other suggestion and I believe that was to the code of ethics as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Could you repeat that again? What were the changes that you were, because those aren't on the yellow sheet, is that correct?
No, no, these were brought up by Mayor Protem Abraham today and they would be on the supplemental for today, the yellow sheet as well. Questions?
I guess we can discuss those additions and deletions at the next meeting. Any other discussion on the reports this evening? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on and not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. There is a request for closed session, so we will be in recess and we will reconvene in the boardroom in about five minutes. Thank you for coming tonight. Once again, congratulations, Quinn. Thank you for representing the city as well as you do. Thank you so much.